Tina Koto Katoa, Kamahini Mahana Kia Koto Katoa, no mai hairemaiki tine hui. And I'd like to extend a special welcome to some students, I think from Otago Polytech, who are here today to observe the meeting and will be writing a project, or a couple of projects, on the basis of what they've heard. So hopefully we can keep you guys awake. A special welcome also to the number of different groups that are represented here today that are going to be addressing public forum. Thank you for your attendance and we'll start with the group that formally registered their intent early. So welcome to the Archibald Baxter Memorial Trust, Kevin and Paul and yeah, come on up. So for those of you who aren't familiar with public forum, those representing groups get 10 minutes to talk to us about the issues that they're wishing to bring to the table. Councilors then might have questions to follow up on that if you were happy to take them. And yeah, I think that's right. So next 10 minutes in your hands, Kevin.
Good. Thank you very much, Gentee, and thank you all for putting us number one on the agenda. I don't think I need to go through and establish the rationale for the Archibald Baxter Memorial. It's intended to be a Dunedin-based national memorial, not only to Archie and Briggs and the other people from Dunedin, but to commemorate all those from the First and the Second World Wars who took the stand of conscious objectors and in doing so expanded the opportunities for freedom of conscience and civil liberties and things like that. And as you will see from the report, I mean, you already approved the monument in principle. The trust, I should just mention at the very beginning, I mean, does three things basically. One is we are raising funds for our national memorial. The second is we have an annual public lecture every year in commemoration of Archibald Baxter on some aspect of kind of peace and justice. And we've had some very distinguished presenters at that. And the third thing that we do is we organise a Otago-based high school prize on sort of some aspect of peace. This year it'll be a poetry prize. So we do those three things as part of the trust functions and we've now raised substantial funding towards the erection of the monument. And as you'll see from the papers as well, you know, initially we were looking at the Anzac Street site and that was, there were some concerns raised about the appropriateness of that in terms of it being Anzac and this was to conscious objectors. And so we then started looking at other sites and we looked at the sites in the gardens and then we were given approval basically to go ahead and explore the museum site, which I've been away for the last 10 months, so I'm not sure quite what happened. So that did not work out. And in discussions with the council and others, we've identified a site at the corner of Albany Street and George Street, which we think will suit the purposes fine. It doesn't offer the same sort of contemplative space that the museum might have or the garden would, but on the other hand, it provides an opportunity for artists and architects to think through ways in which they could develop a monument that would be aesthetically and challenging and attract a lot of reflective interest. So even though you might not be able to sit around the monument as we'd initially planned and so forth, I mean, we're hoping this one will make an impact in its own way. And we would do this, of course, in collaboration with the council. We'd already initiated a competition for sculptures and we received a large number and selected, in collaboration with the council and other stakeholders, three of those. Those architects and designers went off and designed plans for that, which unfortunately now have come to nout because they would have to be, we have to, they have to rethink them for this particular site, which you can see up on the screen. So basically what I think we're looking for at this stage is more than an in-principle commitment, I mean, some real commitment, because we've already expended quite a lot of money on the design of this already, which went nowhere. And the artists and the architects who designed the original plans are going to have to redo them all again. So we're looking for a commitment that this does seem an ideal site with all of the kind of caveats you've mentioned in the papers. And hopefully you can get us this specification so that all the designers can then build them to make sure that there is no way in which they'll affect any of the council drainage infrastructure that might lie underneath this site. So that we can proceed then and in good faith and without wasting even more money, we might then be able to, you know, get moving on the site and have a monument up as soon as possible. And as you would have seen from Anzac Day, there is a bit of metropolitan urgency about this because in Wellington, a group of people came up with a paper mache figure of Archibald Baxter. And that brought such popular interest in Wellington that the Wellington City Council said, 'We need a monument.' So I think it makes much more sense to have this based in Dunedin than that we have this as the kind of national monument. And I think it would be a kind of a tourist attraction as well. So open for questions and comments.
Thank you very much, Kevin. David?
Better make sure the Australians don't hear about it or they will be claiming he was their son as well. Professor, you've already intimated the concerns that I share a bit about the, I think it's a good location, but it clearly doesn't have the foot traffic that, say, the museum would have. Are you and the trust comfortable with developing that lower part of the area for this purpose as a perfectly satisfactory site?
Yeah, if you hold that slide there, you'll see there is a bit of a seat at the bottom. So we could build it around there and it could be done on a kind of a platform arrangement, although that would probably have to be with some poles and pillars. You know, in a way, it's a kind of a more challenging site than the flat one by the museum. But we were thinking that the lack of foot traffic would be compensated for by the fact that every car that has to stop at the lights there would have to reflect on it and every car going by would have to reflect on it and people waiting for the buses would have to reflect on it. And so in a way, there might be more traffic generated in the end than the designated site in the museum.
Okay. And I think I heard you say the design will have to be redone.
We have to redo the designs and we've already sent a note out to all of the designers and some of them are willing to do it, some of them are a little angry that they have to redo it.
So what would be the timing on that?
We hope that we can get that back by end of October, I think, somewhere like that.
Yeah, they'd have, say, three months to redo their designs.
Thank you.
Councillor Bazich and then Councillor Hall.
I still realise my question is very much the same as councillor Benson Pope's, but perhaps, Professor, you could just elaborate a little bit further. And I realise it's been a long sort of drawn-out process and I'd hate to suggest you should continue, but I do like the idea of people being able to walk up to the monument, around the monument and look at it. And the site is something that does concern me where people will be looking up at it and wondering what it is. Now, are you going to be in some, through some clever design, be able to, you've mentioned, for example, people passing by in the car. Are you going to be able to get the message across as to what it is exactly?
Well, that will have to depend in part on the final designs that we get. I mean, there were a couple of the designs, I don't know if you saw the designs that we were looking at for the final three, but there were some that had an enclosure and, I mean, it may need to be a little bit more figurative or graphic or something like that. I mean, it's something to really sort of focus attention.
There's, I mean, there's no reason why we couldn't have a plaque that explained what it's all about or people could perhaps access a message on their smartphones. I mean, there's different ways of plugging into technology to get more information about the monument.
Yeah, that was the original idea, one of the original ideas, incidentally, that we would have some smartphone access so that people who were passing in front of it could then sort of click on their little gizmos and designate sites and then get some information about Baxter and conscious object in New Zealand, but also then be transmitted to sites in France and we've also been looking at that.
I mean, initially when I saw the site, I thought perhaps you're going to look at excavation taking, maybe going up a metre or so then going back, so there was a platform of some sort. But I know that there was a problems with that particular part of the city where there was slips at wind stage and I'm not sure that you'll be able to do that or not. Certainly a plaque at the very least, but I think it is problematic about getting a monument in there that is going to be easily accessed and people can go and wander around it and have a look, which is what I had hoped it was going to be. Good luck, that's what I'm saying.
Councillor Hall.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, have you got any photographs or sketches of the one you was going to do?
We had of the designs for the museum site. Yes, we've got the sketches and I think Glenn Hazelton and others were on the selection committee for that. I was away at the time. We can certainly supply those. They were approved by your council rep as well.
The designs on this site, of course, are going to be, have to be a lot smaller. It's a lot, the site is a lot smaller and at least two of the three designs we have won't be suitable for this site, so they'll have to be completely rethought. So just on the question of the loading of the monument, in about 10 years, the pipes apparently will have to be replaced or one of them. So we have been talking to your staff about the technical requirements and it looks as though the best option for a removable monument would be a platform with piles that would distribute the weight and would be able to be sort of swung out and then put back when the work was done. So we, this report does contain a few details of that and we would be hoping for a more detailed report that we could look at and give to our three designers as well to take away. So I think that the engineering problems are not insuperable and at least that's the advice we're getting from your staff.
I just hope they wouldn't add to the expense.
Councillor Pete.
Thank you, Kevin and Paul, for coming along today. In the early stages, there was a term you used, a sculpture garden, that would describe what you envisaged. And I'm just wondering if you're still picturing flowers. This used to be a floral bed, as you know, surrounding the sculpture.
Yep. Archie and Millicent were very, very keen on New Zealand alpine plants. And so what we are, one of the things that I think we issued in the instructions to the designers thus far was that if at all possible, we'd like to have these, like to have the monument and the sculpture, whatever comes out, surrounded by mountain plants. So and they would be permanent, so you wouldn't have to keep on replacing them every year.
Councillor Bazich and Pope.
Having made my view clear, I think that, I don't think this is the ideal site, but I don't want the progress of the memorial delayed. Can I be confident that if when you get your reworked drawings for the site, this site, if you don't think they cut the mustard in terms of the persons and events we're commemorating, you're commemorating, that you would come back to us and, you know, I'd say I'm not encouraging delay, but can I have that insurance policy there that if what you get doesn't, isn't fit for purpose, that we'll look again?
Yes, and the other alternative would be to kind of use a variant of the designs that we've already got and then take up a spot in the botanical gardens, which would also, I think, indicator would be available.
Thank you.
That has less traffic than we think this site would have and certainly less than the museum.
No further questions? If not, thank you very much, Kevin and Paul, for coming along. Much appreciated. So I think next on the agenda, we have the Otago Racing Club, represented by Stephen Grant and Ray Keane. Welcome, Stephen and Ray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Stephen Grant, I'm president of the Otago Racing Club and with me is Ray Keane, who is the vice president. Our appearance here today arose after we only learned within the last 24 hours of a recommendation of the Grants Subcommittee that the application for rates relief that we had lodged, and we lodged it in December of last year, should be declined. And in the course of their deliberations, we understand that the Subcommittee was concerned about the level of community use of the facilities provided by the club. The application that we made, by hindsight, did not address the public benefits at all well. The application was lodged at a time when there was a change in both the chair of the club and the chief executive of the club and this application got submitted without my having any input into it. And it was, had maybe been lodged on the basis of a template that had been used in previous years and didn't catch up with some developments that had taken place in the meantime, which we would have amplified in the application had we taken more care over it. So we appreciate that there's no right of appeal against the Subcommittee's decision, but we certainly wouldn't want the application to just be treated as it is. There is further information that needs to be supplied in connection with that application. Now, on the sheet that has been provided to you, I've endeavoured to list the public benefits as we see them of the use of the property. And the most recent development is, of course, the application which was made for residential subdivision of 11 sections on Gladstone Road, which was granted in July of last year, following a mediation between ourselves and the submitters to that application. The resource consent which has been issued as a result of that proceeding requires that there will be an easement in gross for public access in favour of the Dunedin City Council, created over a green space area in a position identified in the plan attached to the resource consent. The easement gets, will in due course be registered on the title and run with the land. In addition to the easement, the easement in gross, there'll also be a consent notice lodged against the title which records that the site is subject to the easement in gross, providing public access to the area identified on the depositive plan as the public access area. This area shall be made available in perpetuity for the enjoyment of the general public for those days where events at the racecourse, such as race days, require the land for car parking space. And the number of days on which the land is required for race meetings is 10 presently. In addition to the grant of the easement, the club has also accepted that the landscaping of the public access area should be maintained and enhanced in accordance with a landscape mitigation concept plan that has been prepared and approved. So that's a significant ongoing public benefit that the club is going to provide. It formalises what has been a continuing use of the racecourse property for people for recreation activities. And we list some of those in the summary that I've provided. Ray Keane will also address you briefly about the progress that we're making with that subdivision. So in addition to that green space area, we have provided a set of public toilets that, close to the grandstand, it's a new building. That facility is open to the public during daylight hours year-round and its existence is signposted by, signed at the Gladstone Road entrance to the property. I've mentioned that several care facilities, including the Hawkesbury Trust, who have the property on the corner of Gladstone Road and Puddle Alley, use the racecourse property for recreation, as do a number of the other rest home homes in Mozgale. The Tari district, we call them the Otago district, but it's in fact the Tari district pony clubs have their permanent base on the racecourse property and they have an extensive cross-country course in the centre of the racecourse proper. We regularly have cross-country events at Wengatui. The Edmund Cup is run there annually and a number of other organisations use it for cross-country purposes. We have the annual Mud Sweat and Tears at Wengatui, which attracts patronage of up to 1,000 people. There's a duathlon to take place shortly. The Otago Sled Dog Club use the property for their training. Kindergarten has used the club's commercial kitchen for fundraising activities. We've had the Vintage Motor Club there. Woodworkers Association are there year-round. We've got a new organisation, new private organisation trialling use of part of the grandstand for ladies' gym activities. We've got the Parkover property facility for caravans and camper vans who are charged a modest fee for using the facility. Wengatui Function Centre has very extensive use for weddings, in particular, and some conference facilities. The bookings for the weddings extend well into next year. And of course, the club has its own charitable fundraising activities, the most recent of which was our positively pink race day last Sunday, which raised $4,500 for the New Zealand Breast Cancer Foundation. So we apologise that our application was light on detail as to use of the facilities. We can assure you that the property is extensively used by the public. The club is committed to keeping it that way and willingly enters into the public access easement over the green space area, which I should say is an area of approximately two acres. For those who know Wengatui, it's the area that's presently used for car parking on our premier days. Ray, you might like to talk about the subdivision.
Yeah, just briefly, just to let you know, where we're going forward since the resource consent has been approved. We are currently going through the process of, we've employed Terimac to come back to us with the costings of the subdivision. We are very committed to it, to go forward, as Stephen has said. It's something that's very important to the club, for the future of the club. And we are committed and also included in that, as Stephen has said, is the green space area, which, as I do say, will be maintained by the club as well. So it's not a cost to the council, that green part will be maintained by the Otago Racing Club. But we are very committed to go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are you happy to take questions?
Yes.
Just before I asked for questions, I did, when I heard that you were coming to speak today, engage with staff just to understand, I didn't think there was an appeal process, but I have engaged the staff to ascertain whether or not there is one. There is in fact one and I think it would be helpful for me just to read that now for the clarity of councillors, so that that is clear and that you guys are clear in terms of your options. So this is in our 2015 Grants Policy, 6.4 Appeals. The appeal must be lodged in writing within one week of the receipt of the letter from the council advising of the outcome of the application. The appeal will be reassessed by relevant officers in association with the chairperson of the Grants Subcommittee. A further meeting of the Grants Subcommittee will be scheduled to consider any appeals. In the case of appeals, applicants may appear before the Grants Subcommittee to present their case. The decision made at the appeal meeting is final and the applicant, regardless of the outcome, is still entitled to apply at any future funding rounds, provided the funding criteria are met. So upon receipt of your letter, if you do wish to appeal the decision, then a letter of response to the relevant staff members would be the appropriate course of action.
Thank you for that clarification.
So with that, any further questions? Councillor Lord?
Yeah, look, I just have a question. Is it normally a partial rates relief you get or a full rates relief?
It's a partial rates, worth $8,000 in the current year.
So you normally would get $8,000 reduced or the rates are worth $8,000?
The relief is $8,000.
Yeah. And what's the total?
Sorry, I can't.
No, that's all right, that's all right.
Councillor Staines?
I was interested to see and hear that you have parking space for camper vans and toilet facilities and at the moment, the city is struggling to find enough places for freedom campers. What sort of charge are you making for the vehicles that park on your property?
The arrangement with the Parkover properties, those fees are very modest.
For one vehicle, it's $10?
Yep. So how many vehicles are you normally seeing park up?
Varies, various. From sometimes it's quite a number. Not like this time of year, there might be half a dozen there. A lot of them down to likes of just small vans.
So in terms of a revenue stream over a year, is that something you can?
It's not a large revenue stream for us, but it's, everything is significant.
Just thinking about whether there's a discussion point there with the city because we are struggling to find places for freedom campers.
Some years before other areas have started up out in Onata, some years our annual income might have been $15,000, but it's less than that now because there's other facilities available, like at the AMP showgrounds and those sort of things.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Noon.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Have you done the calculation with the consent process that's been complete? Have you done the calculation whilst you saw some of those residential sections in your ownership, what your rates will be for the 16, 17 year?
No, we have not.
Because it might pay to touch base with someone in the rates department before you file your appeal. It was just a thought.
Thanks. Any further questions? If not, thank you both very much for coming in.
Thank you for talking. Thank you very much.
Which brings us to the third public forum speaker today, which is Tony Dunston from the Forbury Park Trotting Club. Welcome, Tony. Tony, I understand you're the chairman of the Forbury Park, sorry, Trotting Club?
Trotting Club, yep, thank you.
And the floor is yours for the next 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you for that. Madam Chair, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Tony Dunston. I am the chair of the Forbury Park Trotting Club. I'm here, I took a bit of a hospital pass this morning from our president, Mr Gerald Caifid, who tendered his apology. He was called away to a family matter. So I got the hospital pass and as a consequence of that, I'm not sure the status of our application. application. So bear with me as I go through it. Firstly, thanks for the opportunity to talk to you today about our application. We have been the benefactors of the council's grace over prior years, but we are making application to continue that. Within our application, we submitted a copy of our financial statements, which if you've had a chance to have a look, have a look at, you'll see that not only is Forbury Park in a very precarious situation, our very existence is under threat. We suffered a $200,000 loss last year, a lot of which was down to the floods. We were required to completely redo our track and of course, there's some consequence to that as we go forward. But as I said, I'm thankful for the opportunity to present to you, Forbury Park is a very good, an extremely good corporate citizen. We do a lot for many of the groups around town, many of which were covered off in our application. But, but I guess since, since that time, there's been other activities that we've been involved in, which I'd like to cover off. For instance, last Thursday, we had 2,000 odd schoolchildren come through our facilities as part of the careers expo. There was 47 exhibitors, including fire and police and those sort of entities. To be fair, we ran that at a loss of about $5,000. Unbeknown to us, the, the Politico, I think were hosting the, the event, had the expectation that we were providing partitioning for the exhibitors and trestle forms. So that required a purchase on our part and of course, we're going to try and recover that over time, but we did incur the cost upfront. Another activity, I received a, an email yesterday from Deborah Manning and her group down at Food Share, they are interested and we've got a meeting with them tomorrow in terms of hosting their annual fundraising event, which we'll do gratis obviously. But, but also I'd just like to reiterate the number of groups that do, that do benefit from our, our assistance in providing facilities and they include the police, the wargamers, the Dunedin Horticultural Society, Prodrive Youth, the Dunedin Dahlia Group, the Rose Society, the Model Train Show, the Dunedin Bird Club, Cavisham Harriers, New Zealand Fire Service, New Zealand Future Group, the Cargill Progress, Probus Group, Kids Carts, Lions Kids Fundraiser. We also do fundraising activities and we, we retain on site containers for, for the likes of the Sarah Cohen Group, the Physio Pool Fundraiser, the Neonatal Trust and the Otago Community Hospice. So we do do a lot of activities. As I say, we are in some financial, times of financial troubles. We need to work our way through it and we would welcome the opportunity that council might provide us in terms of rate relief. I'd happily take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Tony? Councillor Z.
You mentioned the loss of over $200,000 in the track and the, and the flooding of last year, are they all connected? Like the, you, the, the track cost you that amount of money to be replaced? Was that, is that?
Not, not that total, no.
Is that where you made the loss?
It was $60,000 to $70,000 that we had to fund for the, for the.
So that's not covered by insurance or anything on that?
Not that, no, no. We had a look at ensuring it this year. You're always wiser after the event, but it's prohibitive, the premiums for that. But I think it was a well documented, we managed to get in the newspaper and turn things around with, with the help of others, but you know, there was extensive cost in that, John.
Any further questions? Councillor Wiley.
Yeah, just a quick question. Gads, what sort of money does New Zealand Racing Board put back into the community through their grants?
I, I can't talk on behalf of either Harness Racing New Zealand or the New Zealand Racing Board. What we do, and they're covered off in their financial statements, Andrew, is that we, we pay our stakes of, or paid our stakes in 2015 of $1.3 million and that obviously goes to the likes of trainers and jockeys, owners. In fact, there was a, there was a party representing the Labour Party and I think the Greens Party that were doing a roadshow quite recently, they were intending to come to the club to understand what contribution that the club makes in terms of employment within the city. That never happened because they couldn't get their timetable together, but there is a lot of people involved and I was, I'm quite new to the board, but I was quite gobsmacked at how many people are actually involved and employed for, for the racing activity alongside, you know, the, the corporate work that we do.
Yeah, no, I, this was a big one of Winston Peters when he was Racing Minister and nationally there was, the, the economy around horse racing, whether it's harness or gallops, is, is quite a strong economy and I'd be interested to see with both associations actually, or both groups, you know, presenting to us on that, on the impact of the industry right across the board and jobs and revenues. But the other part being is I know that New Zealand Racing Board gives out grants back into the communities and I was wondering what that was looking like.
I don't get that information.
But, okay, I've been Googling it, but I haven't been able to find it.
What I can say is that my appointment to the board was as a result of the financial difficulties that the club's experienced. I, I have a background in financial management and, and recovery, if you like. Our, our immediate goal was to get the club to a position where racing holds its own, cost neutral, and that we can develop non-race revenues to fund the infrastructure and the maintenance of our facilities, which, you know, is no, no small thing. We are developing a, a close relationship with Harness Racing New Zealand and the New Zealand Racing Board. I'm meeting with the Board of Harness Racing next month to give them updates as to where we're going. But we have to focus on, on the job, the task at hand and we are quite busy doing that.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions? Tony, you will have heard the appeal rights that I read out earlier, but if you do wish to appeal the decision which was made by the Grants Committee a couple of weeks ago, I think, when that letter arrives, that ability to appeal that decision is entirely open to you, so.
So that decision's been made?
The decision was made by the Grants Subcommittee, yes, yep, and it was delegated to the Grants Subcommittee.
Yep, okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.